Good evening. Roll call today. Councilmember Royal.
President.
Councilmember Gomes.
President.
Councilmember Willis. Councilmember Gilliard. Councilmember Jackson.
President.
Councilmember Kali. Councilmember Baker.
President.
Mayor Bill Edwards.
President.
You have a call.
Okay, uh, member, we're recording.
The first item of business is the Employee Classification and Compensation Study Presentation by Management Advisory Group Inc., M.A.G.
Good afternoon. My name is Russell Campbell. I'm senior vice president with Management Advisory Group. And I am the project manager for engagement on behalf of the firm. And what I'd like to do this afternoon is give you a brief overview of the firm, the process of study, the methodology that we'll be using, as well as talk about some of the particulars of the scope of work that was identified in the question proposal, and the partnership of timeline by which we expect to complete the project. As I go through the presentation, if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to stop and ask. And with that said, I'll go ahead and start it. Management Advisory Group has been in business since 2001. We're headquartered in Fairbach, Virginia. I work out of the Clunche, South Carolina office. We typically do about fifty to sixty of these type engagements a year around the country. We work at about forty or fifty states. With Doug Strong, Chicago State Director, recently we worked with the Chad County Schools, Clayton County, the Land of Oak Schools, as well as all county joys. This particular project has about five or six significant goals, just like a brief that goes to make sure that everyone is on board with what we've been asked to do with respect to the compensation classification study. The primary goal of the project is to position the city so that it can retain and attract talent within the organization. Being a newly created entity, the city is still evolving and growing, there will be certainly positions and needs identified presently going forward in the future, there will be different occasions, different types of skill sets. And the study that we gather certainly is flexible enough, but it will allow the city to grow its compensation classification plan and structure as additional positions come on board or new positions are created. Also, we want to ensure as a goal of the study that we adhere to the principles of equal work and work based on value of the duties and responsibilities that have been assigned to respective employees within the scope of the economy for what? We want to outline promotional opportunities, make sure that policies and procedures are updated and current, and make sure that the city's ability to compete with the multiple jurisdictions in the region are solid and sound, and that across the board, regardless of the title of position or regardless of the department, the city is in a position to compete for the right type of skill set to feel basically to that they're on board. Scope of services. I'm not going to go through each one of these. Many are interrelated, but I will point out the first one talks about providing a comprehensive evaluation of every job within the city to determine its relative worth to the organization for internal equity and to establish pay ranges instead of progress within the range. This week, my staff is on the ground. We're holding a series of meetings throughout the organization where employees are coming and attending one-hour briefings where we're introducing them to the study, the scope, the process, the scope of work, the methodologies that's going to be used. And we're also explaining to them how to complete the job analysis questionnaire, which will be the foundation of the analysis that we're going to be putting together for the study and process. One of the other parts of the scope of services is a critical one that I'm going to actually talk about later on in the presentation, is that the city is looking at the viability of establishing a fifteen dollar per hour wage floor within the organization. So no position within the city would pay less than fifteen dollars an hour should the city decide to go forward with that initiative. And so I'm going to talk about that a little bit toward the end of the presentation with respect to what other communities in the state of Georgia have adopted a fifteen dollar per hour minimum wage, and also some trends that technically nationally has been placed at fifteen dollars an hour.
Did you want us to roll back a question?
Yes. Yes, please.
Okay, that's fine. We'll do more. And so those are the major aspects of the scope of services. I think we provided your topic in the presentation in advance. If you want to go through in detail, there's something there for you to review. The team consists of myself as project manager, Carol Long will serve as the co-project manager. In addition, we have David Hookingbill. Don Long is company president. Don now works in the human resources arena. But he also assists communities with developing master fire plans as well as police organizational reviews. And we have Steve Foster and Mr. Dragan, who are responsible for the IT and the market survey as it relates to the project. One of the selling points of our company is all of us are senior individuals as it relates to public sector management. I've been a HR director, assistant senior manager, and I've been doing this for about twenty years. Part of the process was identifying comparable organizations throughout the state that we would not compare the city of whom to. I provided you with a list of those organizations. Just quickly run through them. Athens, Clark County, Atlanta Public Schools, Bev County, Chatham County, City of America, City of Atlanta, City of Savannah, Dory Castle, Tipton, and Chad County School District. I apologize, those are actually some of the recent projects. We did have a list of the combos, combos we're going to use in this project. Those are just other projects we've done around the country. Part of the project also includes providing the city with software and training for the HR staff so they'll be able to maintain the study going forward. As a best practices agenda item, the organization shouldn't have to undergo a major study like this for another five to six years, and we're going to provide the software which will allow you to achieve that benchmark. As jobs change, duties and responsibilities change, the HR department will be able to conduct a review to determine whether or not the job needs to move up in classification and pay. Same can be true of the job loses duties and responsibilities, they can also identify where the job should be placed within the context of the compensation structure. Any new positions that are approved by the commission, the HR department will be able to slot in based upon the new software that we've applied at the end of the study process. We probably saw the classification manager, again, I won't go into real detail at this point in time, due to time constraints, but if you'd like to get more information on that, I sort of can provide that to you. Fifteen dollars an hour, that is a big debate around the country. It shows a minimum wage for the lowest level workers in any organization, public or private. Right now, there are twenty-nine states that have adopted minimum wages that are above the federal minimum wage of seven twenty-five an hour. There are forty-two communities, cities, and counties around the country that have adopted minimum wages above the federal minimum wage. Just a little historical perspective, the minimum wage came about nineteen thirty-eight based on President Roosevelt. Roosevelt's initiative with respect to the D bill and initial minimum wage was twenty dollars per hour, and that was set in nineteen thirty-eight. It's been amended several times, but today it's seven dollars and twenty-five cents. And you will see that in the state of Georgia, the city of Clarkston is the first municipality to mandate a twenty, uh, excuse me, fifteen dollar per hour minimum wage. It is my understanding in the last budget of former mayor, Tocin Reed, city of Atlanta, that they're supposed to move to a fifteen dollar per hour minimum wage in FY nineteen twenty budget. So Atlanta will be another municipality that goes to fifteen dollars an hour. As it relates to across the country, the highest minimum wage in the United States is actually in the city of Sea-Tac, Washington, which is a suburban community outside of Seattle, Washington. The minimum wage there is sixteen dollars and nine cents per hour. There's great deal of back and forth as it relates to pros and cons of implementing a fifteen dollar an hour minimum wage. Some of the pros are it provides the lowest level employees with opportunities for their salaries to keep pace with the cost of living. It does have a positive impact on morale within the organization. And one would argue there is some positive impact on productivity as well. There have been a number of studies done that says that it reduces the income inequality, which is a major problem in this country that continues to grow and exacerbate. It does provide opportunities for some who offer government assistance based on increasing their minimum wage so they can provide better standard of living for their new families. It does spur economic growth. Research shows that those individuals at the lower end of the wage scale tend to spend a great deal of their disposable income, whether in saving or investing, and so that money will go back into the community, spurring the economic development change, creating jobs, goods, and services within the community. Also allows those who may want to invest in their education, have more money in their pocket to pursue additional training. It should have a positive impact on the city's labor pool as more potential applicants will find the city more attractive when you look at the salary combined with benefits. It positions the city to become an employer of choice within the region. On the downside, the cons, probably the biggest is many feel it's an unfunded mandate on business when minimum wage floors are established. I tend to argue that business will do what it has always done, simply pass on any increased costs of doing business to the consumer. And I'm referencing more the private sector when I say that. Probably the second biggest downside would be minimum wage laws raise labor costs, which is typically the biggest cost of not only a public sector entity, but also a private sector entity. But I think the two are fixed, if are outweighed the potential downside in terms of implementing a fifteen dollar an hour floor as it relates to minimum wage. One of the things that we see in urban areas is because there's so many jurisdictions that are going to relatively short driving distance, where employees will move from one organization to the other, particularly when they don't have to change their commute. Most people will drive up to an hour and a half one way if the job pays wages that are very competitive, like the upper end of the pay spectrum. And so the city cannot afford to be lagging behind as it relates to competitively paid. The city has to be in the upper tier, I believe, in terms of competitively paid to keep pace with the many other jurisdictions, public, and then also keep pace to some degree with the private sector organizations in the community. Certainly, an increase in one's little wage will have a positive impact on reducing poverty, attracting younger workers into public service, and spurring economic development within organizations, and reducing turnover, improving the overall quality of life about. And so just to recap, we believe it's a positive with the city going, pursuing possibly the fifteen dollar an hour minimum wage. It certainly will position the city to balance the benefits package to position itself as an employer of choice. Our study will not only look at salary and wages, but we'll also be looking at the benefits of the city to see how you stack it with other entities, public and private, within the region. Project timeline and phases associated with the project. Today, as I said, we've initiated the project, we're holding the meetings for the rest of the week with the city employees, explaining the process and showing them how to complete the questionnaire. Next phase, we'll be doing the market surveys where we'll be contacting about twelve different organizations, which if you do not have that in your packet, I'll be happy to have Ms. Henderson provide that to you so you can see the other cities, counties, that we'll be contacting and provide information. We will also gather private sector information with the Federal Department of Labor Bureau of Labor Statistics, and we'll provide the raw data so that the city can see how they were to build our recommendation. We anticipate having the initial findings in terms of report late May, and we'll come back and present the report, and we'll give the organization opportunity to review it, provide feedback, and we'll address any questions or concerns and find them in the draft. And we hope to move to the finalizing report in early June, all in line with the city's budget process. And then finally, we'll get to doing the job descriptions and the software installation first quarter of July this summer. That in a nutshell is what we're going to be doing for the city. If you have any questions or concerns, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. I don't see any questions.
Excellent.
What's wrong with that? You have one. What's wrong with that? But go ahead and succeed, I'm sorry. Ninety bucks.
Councilmember Kali and then Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
So pardon me, I was, I was, I might have just, because my question is, why exactly, maybe you can, why exactly are we studying our compensation class specifically? If you were to, are we studying positions that we are about to hire, or are we studying all the positions in the city?
Good question. I'll answer the latter first. We're studying all the positions in the city. But one of the things I'm going to be doing next week is meeting individually with department heads, talking about any specific issues they have with recruitment retention or any potential restructuring that may take place in another department, which may impact a position not today, but down the road, four months down the road, eighteen months down the road. And so that will be addressed. The other question was, why are we doing this now? As a newly created city, a lot of your processes and procedures are still evolving, still being developed. A lot of what you have in place, I believe, is mirrored from what Fulton County has, and so it's imperative at this point in time that the city develop its own compensation classification plan that's unique to the jobs and composition, composition of positions within the city.
And the reason I ask, and we're also, you're also not just studying the salaries, but you're also studying if there are type redundancies or, are you just studying the salaries? Are you actually studying the work chart to see if there's a more efficient way to?
We're not doing an operational management or efficiency study, but we will look at the classifications to make sure that how they're commonly classified or listed is consistent with best practices in the industry as it relates to employment and labor. For example, if we find that there's a position that seems to have more than one primary focus, from a compensation standpoint, we will advise whether or not it makes sense to maybe split that out into two positions.
So here's the reason that I'm asking is that we're not really doing it yet, we're almost two years, and we have these, we have like five new employees. So if your study comes back and says that some of the employees that we're paying, we're paying their salaries too high, are we going to drop their salaries? Or if some of the, if some of the employees that are currently here, if their salaries are too low, are we going to raise their salaries? And how do, how will that affect compression? Because I do feel like we tried to do some of this work in-house before we began hiring all of these folks, and so we kind of have this kind of tight, tight pay and class chart with, where we've already factored in compression. So I'm just wondering, what, what happens if the study comes back and says that we need to make changes in that nutrition?
Okay. And just quickly, for those who may not know what salary compression is, salary compression is when you have, you know what some others may not know. Salary compression is when you have large numbers of employees clustered around the bottom end of the pay spectrum, and they have very huge attainment in the organization or experience in the field. And so that is compounded when you do a new salary study, and if all you do is bring new people to the new proposed minimum, they're going to come in on top of those folks that have been there a long time. So you have to put, put in place mechanisms to address that. And so I did a quick diagnostic of the current salary structure, and you do have problems with salary compression. You do have compression to put in the police department where there's not enough of a differential between the exempt and non-exempt positions. So a minimal overtime, a non-exempt employee in police or fire is going to make more than somebody who's exempt, who's a higher rank. And so it exists there, and exists in some of the administrative positions as well. And so when we build a new structure, we want to look to see, first of all, which employees are below the market minimums, and then what it takes to get them there. And then we're going to run a formula probably based on time and position to disperse folks within their salary range so that when new hours come in utilizing the new structure, they won't be on top of current employees. So there will be recommendations to increase salaries that the market shows that are lagging behind. Now, as part of the study, we never recommend reducing anyone's salary as it relates to a common class study. We typically advise HR as a part of this policies and procedures to implement what we call red circle. That individual employee in a position whose salary is above the maximum of what we're recommending, their base salary will be frozen until the salary ranges increase over time and they fall back within the designated range.
Okay, I got two more questions, but I'm going to go to my neighbor.
And, Mr. Kali, that is the question, the most troubling question I'm glad you asked because I would. And compression is a problem. I haven't gone through this at Fulton County, not only in the area of salary range, but also in the ability to be promoted. And those things we really, really, you know, we can't take lightly, because as you said, you know, it takes a couple of years for you to get out and evolve enough, but then there's some people down there who may not want to wait two years to get promoted. And so what this is always good, Mr. Campbell, and it gives us to a position where we're competitive and no end in line. It does have its drawbacks to existing employees, so thank you for your input.
Okay, last two. One is a comment, and then one is a question for our attorney. But the, I have, I have been asking about having higher pay for police officers to come in with degrees, because lots of things have shown that police officers with degrees have fewer use of force complaints, right, and they have higher customer satisfaction rate. So I would like to put that to be included in the study. And then my, my question to our attorney is, because I hate that our mayor goes into this, but we actually did pass a resolution or almost passed a resolution about, about the fifteen dollar minimum wage, and I have noticed that we are increasingly using more contract workers. And I'm wondering, is there any way to either legally require those that we contract with to have that fifteen dollars an hour, or can we give preference in the procurement process to folks whose company's wages match the party's? And before you answer it, I think this is, I'm sorry, I'm, I don't know if you're major, we're just talking about that. I'm talking to you now.
Okay.
Do you think so? I asked for your opinion.
So we can discuss it privately. I mean, I'm going to be resilient if that's your preference, if it's okay, council.
Yeah, no, that's, that's fine. I do want to have that discussion.
And not to delve into the legal realm, but I just recently finished up some work that I'm doing in Canada last, last fall during O.K. and they passed a resolution moving into wages, I think to thirteen and then eventually fifteen within the organization. And then many of the communities that we work in, Seattle, Baltimore, New York, they also have asked arguments as they're required contractors. You do work, you know, do work for the city, right, to what they're doing.
One of the, one of the ways that I ended up in the scene is because I've worked for MARTA, and I was, I was amongst the lowest paid workers in MARTA, but we imparted for certain wages and benefits. And the way, the way that I've seen many companies get around doing that, and it's what they did to us, and they just outsourced that apartment on the town, so.
Thank you for this necessary study. When we started the city, and yes, we're still relatively new because we're about to be two years old, there were three things taken into consideration in creating a class, a pay and class study that was industry, what the industry is doing, DCA, and the archer study. And then it was a, you know, then our class pay was put together with those three things. So we don't know if we're in alignment with the industry as far as city's goals and our size. And then also, we don't know, I do know we do have compression problems. And so whatever the recommendation comes back from the study, I'm sure HR will guide us on how we will be able to deal with those issues. The question that I have is, how long is it going to take for you to get this done? And the second question is, are the elected bodies' salaries included in the study?
Okay. Your first question, you will have the draft report, I'll be back with the draft report late May, and then after you've had some time to digest it, I'll respond to your feedback and make whatever adjustments need to be made. The final report will be issued early June to coincide with the budget process. All positions associated with the city will be looked at as it relates to compensation difficulties.
Okay, thank you.
Just one more comment to Mr. Kamal.
Yes.
He raised a very good point. One of the things that I do know is, again, to an HR director, assistant manager, is this is a significant study and step for the city, but he is right. The other piece of the equation needs to look at operations in every department to make sure the structure and the staffing process and procedures are consistent with the vision and mission of the organization. Because you're only two years old, or some of you, some may see that as a long time. I see that as being a young age in terms of love of the government. And so sometimes you benefit from having someone from the outside come in, kind of assess how things are set up now, how they're organized now, what staffing needs to look like towards the workforce planning over the next five years, particularly in public sectors. A master plan for fire, things like that down the road could save you a lot of time on the planning side. Okay, Mr. Baker?
Thanks so much for coming to me.
Thank you, everybody.
I do understand that two of my three questions were already discussed, but I do want to let you know that there was a resolution passed to actually have your study be based on our decision already made to increase. So not necessarily the feasibility, you know, those things that you had in the presentation in the early part of it, but more so the decision.
Has been made.
Yes.
Okay, I just needed affirmation.
Thank you so much, Ian, for coming in for what I do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Mayor Council, the next item about our National Main Street Initiative has been pulled. The city manager is asking that it be pulled to the April ninth meeting. So therefore, the next item is the legislative update by Andrew Long, A.R. Long Company.
Give me that. That's the question, ask the why.
What is the reason?
DCA wasn't favored, DCA.
Okay. DCA wasn't favored. Okay. So we're not having that discussion at all?
Good evening. Good evening. I'm not Andrew Long, I'm actually Lolita Jackson, and I'm a consultant working with Andrew Long Company. And so what, the Senate is still in session, and Andrew could not make it here in time to give the update, so I will share with you. You should have copies or printed printouts of the government relations legislative update, which has an outline of the various bills. If you will notice, the very first four bills on there, their House bills, those are the active bills that the South Fulton delegation had been working on, on behalf of the city of South Fulton. The others on the list are really just bills of concern that you would be concerned with, that the city would be concerned with. And so as it relates to the first four, I will just let you know kind of where we are on those. The first one is the House Bill 121, that's the Fulton Industrial Boulevard Bill, and that one, right now, there is, there, it's been released for signatures literally just today, but there's a meeting tomorrow that the Fulton delegation will have on this regarding this, this particular, particular bill tomorrow. And so there will probably be further updates after that meeting tomorrow when the delegation discusses that. The other one are the, and I, if you have any particular questions, I can, want me to finish through all of them and then we'll come back? Okay. The, the next one is the TAG legislation, Representative Marie Metz, the House Bill 329. The, the next one is the TAG legislation, Representative Marie Metz, the House Bill three twenty-nine. And from what we understand, literally just today, the Senate aide is taking that bill to get signatures on the Senate, Senate floor. The House Bill four twenty-three, the homestead exemption bill, I understand that bill from Representative Bazemore has, has passed. And so that, that one is, is finished for the homestead exemption. And then finally, the hotel motel tax, that one is going to the, for signatures on the Senate floor as well. So that one is not, not complete. The other ones are just bills of concern for your awareness. So I will do my, I, I, what I will do is, I'm not sure what your questions are, but what I can do, because Andrew, we're kind of working as a team, I work so more with the staff and Andrew works so more so with the legislative delegation. And so what I can do is take your questions and have Andrew follow up via email if that will work. But if you have questions, we definitely want to hear them.
Okay, Councilor.
Something I understand, and I thought we had signatures. It was just about to open the Sea-Tac for House Bill one twenty-one.
For House Bill? I understand that was just released today, so there, there may have been signatures already. I know there's a meeting tomorrow on that one.
I can give you some insight on that, that's not correct. The second replacement bill had signatures, but the original bill had to go back and get signatures. And so that bill was being held, the various members of the delegation and others went back and got the Senate, I guess the committee chair, slow-mo chair, to release it. And after releasing it, the Fulton delegation chair asked to have that meeting tomorrow. But all of the signatures are not on the original bill, it's on the replacement bill that has that concession that we discussed.
And also we noticed that the, the same people were at the same, they were at the same.
The other question is, so I just didn't expect, when is the last day of the session?
Next Tuesday, the second.
So I just didn't expect for us to, this tag and hotel motel tax to be drawn out so long, like to the last minute. Do you have, do you have any idea when they anticipate on getting that to a local calendar once this time?
I don't, but I can make sure I get that answer for you.
Uh, any more questions?
Councilmember, please.
No, I just, I just, I know, I know sometimes there are zombie bills in the Senate that can, you know, be attached at the last minute. So I just, I would just ask that you're a couple that, you know, that you have the cities not surviving crossover day with us today or yesterday or tomorrow?
It's Thursday, the twenty eighth, I believe. No, crossover day.
It's the twenty seventh, I think.
Yeah, the twenty seventh, okay. I thought they already had crossover day, yeah. It was March seventh, it was earlier in the month.
Not in there.
Okay, right.
The, they can still come back. And so I just want to make sure that we keep an eye on these and we're not surprised if someone attaches one to something else.
Yes, and, and like I said, these are listed here as those that we're watching. And so.
All right, thank you very much. Pat.
Our next agenda item is a resolution activating the downtown development authority for City of South Fulton. Councilmember, please.
Hey, I'm actually going to ask that we hold that to the next meeting as well.
Thank you. That is the agenda for the work session.
I believe that we go into the second session for real estate litigation personnel.
Probably move the second discussion, although in favor. Fantastic.